Yep.
I know. They could have just done one more sweep through the company. Give me my box. No, I missed that list again. So there it is. But I'm home. I'm not too concerned about that.
Actually, I'm thinking about returning to spring. I'll come work for you.
There you go. You don't want that. All right, call the meeting in order. Uh, before we do that, I'm going to make a couple of amended changes. We're going to put Diane on there for her post office. Okay.
I suppose we got our approved minutes and stuff like that from the last before.
Meeting, so. Someone wants to approve the last meeting minutes or last month's meeting minutes.
How far back is it?
Very back. Through the last page.
I wouldn't have that ready. Okay, there we go. A, Lion, no S.
Which A?
Oh, under ordinances. Sorry.
For the public time, you're going to add that in when I talk about credit.
Oh, yeah, I didn't have a chance to go back and rewatch it.
Yeah, just add in that you assured the public that the city wasn't paying for that grant.
Yeah.
Under other business number four E, meet on Monday, October seventh.
Yeah.
Concerns.
Nope, looks good. With those changes.
Shouldn't that say Monday, October seventh?
Yeah, I just.
Oh, you just said that's what you were talking about.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Give it a second. One second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same time. All right, that's all business. Close out of that at six thirty-four. We get a motion now to prove that.
What about the agenda? Around the same line.
Well, okay, I thought you guys were approving the agenda in a minute.
Do you guys look at the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Yes, that motion was from Julie to approve the minutes in the agenda second by chance. It's all going. Motion during old business move.
I'll make a motion to journal business.
Oh, second. Motion from Matt Wattnick, second control, Hoshi, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same time. Hold meeting at six thirty-five. Now open up to a regular scheduled meeting. Through roll call. Everybody here. Brendan Bunder here. Charles Foster here. Diane Nisham.
I can't, yeah.
Well, you have any, you can.
Yeah.
Joe Hoshi. Yep. Julie Lyon.
Here.
Matt Wattnick.
Here.
Michaela Frazier is present and Pete is absent with pause. Okay, that being said, Diane, you want to do your post office?
Sure. Hi, Diane, as I'm having been temporarily appointed as alderman for Ward One from October twenty twenty-four through April twenty twenty-five in the city of Colton, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, to solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the state of South Dakota, I will faithfully and impartially, to my best of my knowledge and ability, perform all the duties as provided by law.
All right, welcome back.
Thanks.
Just budget time, I knew you'd be so excited to be back for budget.
I was hoping he was going to get sent off.
Okay. No one's here for public time. So we'll move on to reports. Start with Western with Banner Associates. Phase four and five sanitary sewer improvements on Sherman Avenue and Fourth Street. We go through advertisers.
This item is the sanitary sewer work on Fourth Street and Sherman. It was a work we talked about last month. So we did go out, you know, we talked about is asking Alliance for a price to do that work to see if we could change order onto their current contract. They did provide a price. That price that they provided was two hundred and eighty thousand dollars to do the work. Now, in review of that pricing, they did have to match the, they had to match the unit prices that they gave on the Second Street project. And they had done that, but there was a line item in there for a mobilization charge. And that mobilization charge, the price that they had given was one hundred and seventeen thousand. So with that high of a mobilization charge, it was pretty difficult to justify. It was pretty difficult to justify recommending accepting that price. Now, we had done our own in-house estimate. If we, so what we would, what we thought is if the city would take that to bid, we had a conservative estimate of around two hundred and forty thousand. So with, with that, we'd recommend that the city deny, I guess, or not accept a proposal from Alliance and take this project to bid. One item left to bid. We don't believe that the construction would be able to take place yet this year. So it would have to be moved to next year. Knowing that we've got a Fourth Street project ahead of us. The timeline that we would, I guess, the deadline that we would recommend on that project would be May thirty-first. That give them enough time, start in April, the end of April, have a month to complete the utility work. And then they would temp, temp the road back. So they put temporary gravel on the roadway. And this, so this advertisement and part of the requirements to still be eligible for the ARPA funding is to bid this project and have a contractor under contract before the end of year. So that would mean receive bids, review bids. The council would need to then award the bid to a contractor if, if we do get a bid that's favorable. Once that bid would be awarded, the contractor would have to provide their insurance documents, bonds, performance and payment bonds, and then sign the agreement. And then the city would then sign the agreement and process that through D A and R. I guess questions on that process and it's, it's moving fairly quickly, I guess. I'll get it that this is moving fairly quickly. Ideally, we'd be able to change order non to the existing contracts city has with Alliance. We're just not able to justify the price that was given.
Now, you guys got to push to design it faster.
Yeah, and, and it's, and we have the design completed. So fortunately, going all the way back to March of last year, when we, when we sat down and talked through the, the additional design of this piece of sanitary sewer, and then we talked about the additional design of storm sewer as well. So at that time, we submitted everything to the state. So that design was already completed in March of this year. So that was already submitted to the state, had been approved by D A and R. So now the only thing that we have to do moving forward is put together the bid documents. And a lot of the bid documents, we're able to recycle quite a bit of those just from the Second Street projects and Storm Sewer project. The bid day would be October thirtieth is what we're proposing.
You think two months would be enough time for them to put that in come spring?
So the, the amount of work to put in the two blocks of sanitary is about two weeks' order. It is. Now, there's more than that. They've got removals that they have to do. They've got to put in the sanitary, of course, and then the temporary roadway. So there's, I mean, there's a week in there for removals, there's two weeks for utilities, and then there's likely another week for the restoration, the trench and the construction of the roadway. And what we have when we're done is a gravel surface roadway.
And the one thing that we're working on trying to get this completed to is just so we can have parking this year, you know, for next year by Fourth Street was happening. So.
Yeah. It would have been nice to have.
It would have been, but but as long as we get a bid out by, well, December thirty-first, then we can use it after Monday, so.
As long as everything is accepted.
Yeah. Well.
A lot of paperwork that has, that has to happen by then.
There is, we've, we've had some correspondence with state and not, not just on this work here. There's still other projects that are going to be bidding out yet late season here to meet their deadline. And the state did send out some guidance here recently. And the, the guidance that they had given is it does have to be under contract. So the city would have to have an agreement with the contractor to perform the work. Now, the state necessarily would not have to have, would not have to have given their approval yet. And in anticipation, they know there's going to be an influx of requests coming in at the end of the year. Or they likely don't have the staff to process everything in a timely manner.
But as long as we have it signed by the end of the year?
As long as, as long as we have it signed by the end of the year.
Okay.
You said two forty is what you guys figured?
Going off of the bid prices alone. Yeah. If this work was to be completed using just Alliance's bid prices, you would know a number better than I is one fifty. Without, without mobilization? Yes, so, and which gets us that two eight, but so it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of work using the bid prices that Alliance had given. What, what makes it not justifiable is the hundred and seventeen thousand dollar mobilization charge. Like, talking with Alliance, part of that was originally, we asked that to be completed by the end of the year. That would have been ideal. They don't have the time to do that. They've got other projects going on, you know, frankly, they asked for an extension until December fifteenth. I don't, I don't think that we would feel comfortable opening up the roadway in front of the post office sometime in November. And it, no. There's too much of a chance trying, you know, running into some bad, bad weather, snow. Everything's going to be cold. It's going to be hard to put a trench back together.
Yep.
We, we did ask them if they would modify their price, if we would move it to next year. And they'd said that they had too much work moving in the next spring, that they wouldn't be able to get it done at that time either. What, that they do have too much work or obviously the pricing they had given indicated that they didn't need the work.
I'm just thinking of something Western, no, we put this out to advertise. Is there any way that we can let companies know there could, there could be a potential Fourth Street project for them to bid on also coming up next spring?
Yes, I think that's a good idea.
I think we cut down on mobilization.
And we'll solicit the, the same general contractors we have been soliciting on past projects. And it's, it's likely going to be Sioux Falls area contractors that we call and send the advertisements to.
We need to make a motion to.
Motion go through. To approve the advertising.
I'll make a motion to approve the advertising.
Motion from Matt Wattnick. Second.
Oh, second.
Second from Diane. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion to approve the advertising.
Okay. That advertisement, when would it be? It needs to be to you by when to get in the paper on what day?
It needs to be to me. I have to submit it to them by Wednesday and noon.
Okay, it could be in the paper Friday.
So whatever, if you want me to put it in there, it has to go twice, right?
Yep.
So we'd have enough time, even if we didn't get it in this week, we would still have the eighteenth and the twenty-fifth before the thirtieth, right?
Yeah, yeah. We, I, I don't have, I don't have any concerns. Well, I do want to review that advertising one more time. We've got another project. Yeah, two competing projects.
Yeah. Okay. Move on to other reports. Again with Weston, Banner, phase four and five sanitary sewer, C I P P improvements, final pay requests, number seven. Then final plenty of change orders for number five with closing next.
This is the long awaited final pay request for the C I P P.
So the sewer lining project.
Sewer lining, yep. So I, I think, I think we've discussed the, the resolution, I guess, initially. HK Solutions had come back to do some rework on the manhole structures. They completed that work early in the summer, I believe it was a June timeframe. They provided the reports, so that was one thing that they had stated to the council, they're going to provide. They're going to provide a report for each of the manholes that they did the rework on. Along with that, they were going to supply a memo with certified engineer signature and stamp stating that the work that they had completed met the structural requirements of the, of the contract. And they have done that and we've checked that. So the work that they have done, this pay request is releasing the remainder of the money that would be owed for the, the work done on the project. The, the first item that we have to take care of is the change order item. So the change order item is a reconciliation of the contract. So with the estimated quantities, some quantities were more than what were estimated, some quantities at the end even less than what were estimated. And so at the end of the project, we reconcile that. Let me know if you need any help. It's, it's titled change order number five on the sheet.
It'll be in your upper right corner there.
And so this this change order here, I'll go through, the original contract price was one million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-five cents. There was been four change orders that had modified that price throughout the project. And the current contract price is at one million, eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. This change order, which is the quantity adjustment change order that I'm talking about, it decreases that contract by an additional fifty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy cents.
Here we find that, the change order five. Keep going, Julie. Just about there.
Yep, there it is.
Right after all the number figures. Just like that. Keep going back. It's a little ways back here, right there, I believe. No.
So going, going through that, there's been four change orders prior to this one. And those four change orders result in a deduct on contract of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty cents. This change order number five is another decrease in the contract value of fifty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy cents for a final contract price of one million, thirty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-five cents. So we would have to take action on the change order. Once we take action on the change order, now we can flip over to the paper request.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Second. One second. Can't hear you in one of those.
Yep.
Charles Foster's second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
And if you turn back five pages, about five pages, that would be the pay request. And this final pay request incorporates the change order number five. So that adjusts the final contract price. So the remaining payment, the final out of this project, this would be a payment to hosting excavation. The remaining amount due is sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty cents.
So just out of curiosity, when I was looking at this, where did I see it? On the bottom of the change order five, it says fifty-five, one eighty-six, seventy. What am I missing?
That won't show up on the pay request. That fifty-five, one eighty-six, seventy. That's just adjusting that contract price. So that contract price was one million, eighty-seven thousand, four sixty-eight, fifty-five. So because of that adjustment, it drops the contract price to one million, thirty-two thousand, two eighty-one. If you go to your pay request.
Okay, so we're just taking that, decreasing by that to get that?
Yep.
Okay.
And then on the pay request, if you go to third line, the third line item down.
Oh, gotcha.
So that would be the new contract amount. So that fifty-five thousand is buried into that one ninety-three, three fourteen, the one just above that.
Okay.
So number one, number two. And so the, the city had paid hosting excavating nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, five forty, five hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. So the balance due to get up to the new contract amount is sixty-seven, seven thirty-five, fifty.
Any discussion, concerns?
I'll make a motion.
Number seven, Julie. Maybe a second.
A second.
All those in favor, say aye. Same time. Passes.
Who was the motion second on the change order?
Diane and Chaz, wasn't it?
Okay, moving on to item number C, Banner Associates Association, phase, phase four and five sanitary sewer, form sewer improvements paid request, number three for Alliance.
And I'll go to the cover sheet on this. The cover letter, sorry, the cover letter. This, this is a pay request for work that has been performed between it's going to show on August thirtieth and October fourth of this year. The majority of payments, or the majority of the pay request is in relation to the storm sewer work that was completed on Fifth Street, you know, Iowa, and on Sixth, on Sixth Street to the new Sioux Falls site in that, at the Sag, like the ball street. Also included in this is reconstruction of the Second Street roadway. And as well as the bottom with the asphalt that was installed on that roadway. They've made some pretty, pretty good headway here over this last month regarding Second Street. As you can see, Second Street's not completed. And that's been placed. We still have some remaining work left on Second Street. I guess regarding, regarding scheduling work. Spencer, maybe you can kind of go over the, the work that's been completed, the schedule here to get through project completion.
Yeah. As Weston said, they completed the underground work for the storm sewer on Fifth Street and Sixth Street, and they've moved to the roadway reconstruction there. They have base course down on three of the five blocks, and they're going to hopefully continue that this week. The concrete workers should be coming back to town to start curb and gutter, driveways, and built some valley gutters this week as well. And they'll make quick speed to catch up to the roadway crew and well, we expect paving to happen the week of the twenty-second, no, sorry, twenty-first, uh, the first week of October. And that'll hopefully stay on track and on Second Street, we expect seeing to happen next week with some whole bar restoration and largely reach completion on that face.
Did you say sealant was next week?
Seeding, sorry.
Like grass seeding?
Yep.
Yeah.
And that's on the second you said.
Yeah, and that would, that would correspond with the barricades being torn down and Dollar General getting their driveway back and bringing that culvert that's there right now.
I kind of like that over. You can just, yeah, I like that.
I do too. I do too. I do too.
That could be just left until next week. But we're talking Iowa and the Fifth Street over there and the resurfacing. What if we come upon where these trucks that have been on this road have really ripped up the remaining part of that street to the east? What kind of reconstruction are we, are we going to think built in for that? Because there's been a lot of activity over there with heavy machinery. You know, what has it done to the rest of the surface of that road that was not dug up?
Well, it's, I mean, it's going to deteriorate that surface. And that, and that was a concern going into it as well. You know, part of that is, is that we were kind of constricted by available funding to only be able to cover the cost of replacing that ten or twelve foot trench. Now, between Sherman and Minnesota, fortunately, a good roadway there already prior to, fortunately, unfortunately, we had to tear up a good roadway to put storm sewer in. But on that, on that other side of the surfacing, that wasn't removed. Could feel pretty confident that, you know, that was built for heavier traffic. As we move further towards Iowa. As we move further towards Iowa, there, there are some stretches that, that look to be, oh, okay, like there, well, there was already an asphalt mat or an overlay that had been completed on that stretch between Minnesota and Iowa. But a, as we go south on Iowa, like, we can already see it, Spencer and I were, were out there today. Uh, there's a, there's a chip seal or maybe a, kind of an overlay that started to peel off. Um, and that's right next to where the cut line would be for the new storm sewer, or the new roadway section on Sixth Street. I haven't, I haven't looked at Sixth Street as close. But that, that roadway is in pretty poor condition. So there's, there's gonna be some further deterioration in the road. Chip seal would be a way to seal that back up. Especially if there's some cracks that opened up due to the construction traffic, and that should be something to consider. Does it have to be chip sealed next year? I don't, I don't know. I mean, I think we need to monitor the condition of it and, and see if that should be on, on the list or on the schedule to have a chip seal. But definitely in a couple of years, especially since you have a new roadway and a joint right there on the roadway, it, it probably would be good to do some type of surface treatment, just to extend the life of, of that road. Cause what, cause what you're getting over top of the, the storm trench, that, that's gonna be a pretty well-built road. And, and I do have one item to discuss tonight, just about that section on Iowa and Sixth Street. Most of the, I guess, most of the, the money I would save, as far as the road reconstruction dollars, was put into the section between Sherman and Minnesota. I mean, that, that was our identified route where we'd get more truck traffic. So there was a little bit more money put into the subgrade of subsurface of that road. As we move further past Minnesota, then we went to a lesser of section. And we, we also seen some porous soils as well over there. So in combination with porous soils and the less of a section, we don't, we don't have as good a roadway. But the roadway next to it is, is not a fifty-year roadway either. And so that, that's where the balancing act, um, comes into play is how, how much money do you put into this repair? You try to, do you try to build a fifty-year roadway next to a roadway that's only gonna last fifteen, twenty more years? Well, we've got to do the best that, that we can. It's got to, it's got to still be able to perform. It's, it's gotta be able to hold up and not have issue. We've got to be cognizant of how much, how many dollars we put into it.
So there's, kind of has to be a point. Sorry, go ahead.
No, you go, sorry.
Um, just between normal truck, I mean, how do you say it's being abused or not? And then the, they'll be like, oh, that's what you expect. You know, I mean, there's gotta be some line. And then that's your responsibility to determine that and bring it to us?
Yep, so we do have, um, we took a, took a, a three sixty camera similar to like if you drop down on Google Earth and you pan, and you pan around. So prior to the project, Spencer had taken a three sixty camera and walked, walked the entire job, um, project from us. So we know what the existing conditions were. If, if there's any additional damage on top of that, and I think we're talking excessive, we knew that there was gonna be some wear from construction.
Right.
And that's to be expected.
Yeah.
We see a contractor saying, we can't build this stuff with helicopters. We gotta, we gotta drive the roadways to get to it. And, and that's understandable, but in a case where it's just negligence, that's, that's where we would step in and say, if this is clearly negligence, you could have taken, you know, better precautions in salvaging some of the road, um, and if they didn't, then that's a discussion we have to have with Alliance.
And are you comfortable and confident right now with the way it's rolling, conditions, I mean?
So there, there's gonna be some deterioration where, yep, there's gonna be some additional asphalt that has to be placed.
Yeah.
Yep. And that's already, it's, and, and really the roadway is, is pretty dirty right now, so they need to get that roadway cleaned up. Yeah, Jared has talked about this as well. There, so that map cracking that we have on especially Iowa and Sixth, that holds a lot of dirt in the cracks, and trying to get that up and out of there, I don't know if we'll get it all out. Jared's kind of expressed concern with that, you know, are, are we gonna be able to get this dirt actually picked up? With so much traffic pounding that dirt in, in all these open tracks? But same thing to you, yes, we'll, we'll be able to, right now, I, I feel comfortable in, in the condition that the roadway is in. With the exception, there's, there's a couple of spots that are, there's gonna be some additional work.
I'm just kind of thinking ahead of.
I know, with the budget coming up and stuff, yeah.
But the people up there that are gonna come in here with concerns about, what are you gonna do with my road now that you've done this and this? Now at least we'll, we'll have some answers to give them, you know, going forward, so.
I'd say, I'd say a surface treatment like a chip seal or slurry seal, that, that'd probably be in order. If we, if we do see private deterioration.
Right, now I have to realize, I mean, it's not gonna happen fast.
No, no, but I can say.
But yeah, at least we can bring it in, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
What are you gonna do? Well, you have an answer.
You know, we, we could take action on the pay request, but I do have, I do have one more item with, with that project to discuss.
Okay.
However, you want to do it, Trevor, if you guys wanna do the pay request first and then?
I mean, if you want to, you have something I'm concerned on before.
Yeah, I can, okay, so what, you know, we were discussing the subgrade conditions. So last week on Friday, Geotech was out to look at the subsurface, subsurface conditions, so subgrade, we call it. So the clay grade on Iowa, on Sixth Street, the Geotech was out, and what we do will be prior to, prior to placing the gravel base course on top on the roadway, rebuilding the roadway, we do a test called a proof roll. So the proof roll test, the stability of the subsurface. And with that, we asked Geotech, a geotechnical engineer to come out and watch this proof roll and observe it to identify if we had enough stability for the proposed section that we're talking about. So we're, the section that we're talking about is putting in twelve inches of gravel underneath of the asphalt section. Now, that was proof rolled last Friday. The Geotech wasn't very comfortable with doing the section that we had designed and had coordinated with them on prior to the bidding of the job. Now, Alliance had, the soil was over moisture, so soil was pretty wet, so that creates some instability in the material. So they ripped that soil up, they farmed it, and let it dry over the weekend. So they put the material back, compacted it back down today, and they did another proof roll. Um, Spencer was out there for the proof roll, and I, I came afterwards around noon, and I was passing through Colton. I stopped in, and there was still three-inch ruts in, in that clay grade. Now, when we get to three-inch ruts, a twelve-inch base course section probably isn't gonna heal that. We're gonna likely see that when we, if we put the gravel in right now, and we roll over the top of that gravel surface, we would still see movement at the top of that gravel surface. So gravel wouldn't bridge that. So we do have some alternate sections that we could use, but they are more costly to do that. And here's where I was talking about, you know, we probably don't need to build a fifty-year roadway alongside of, you know, something that only has ten to twenty years of life left in it. But we do need it to be adequate and serviceable. And, you know, and in my opinion, on Sixth Street, that's in fairly poor condition, and we would need to use a subbase material. So instead of just a gravel, it's a bigger material, it's got bigger rock in it. It provides a little bit more bridging capabilities, so if we've got unstable material underneath, the larger rock is gonna lock together and provide more structure, so it's gonna distribute the load, and there's gonna be less pumping, less running with this, with the wet clay or dirt grade underneath. So Sixth Street, I, I think it's something that the city should, we would need to do, we would need to use a, a stronger material. Iowa, it's displaying the same instability. But it may not be a road that sees as much traffic as what Sixth Street does because of the pool, the park. But again, caught, you know, everything kind of comes down to cost. What we're talking about for cost is this, this improved section for both Iowa and Sixth Street would be an additional seventy-eight hundred dollars? Yes, seventy-eight hundred dollars. Sixth Street is about two-thirds of that, so it's about five thousand dollars to do Sixth Street, and another twenty-five hundred dollars to do Iowa. And it's, it's not a cure-all, doesn't, doesn't, doesn't cure any deficient, all deficiencies that the roadway has. But it gives us a lot more confidence in having a good product when we're done with this. So it's, it's not really an item for action, it's more, we have the bid items to, to take care of this, and there's, there's already the foresight in the project to anticipate there's gonna be some of those areas where we need to strengthen the subgrade section. But when we're getting to these values, it's something that I think the council needs to get them put on.
So when, when they're placing the material, how often do you guys check densities, or do you just let them place all the way to work, to below subgrade? And then do that roll test?
So we are checking densities as well, so that with, I've been taking about two densities a block, um, the densities are just a, just a check, just a check, right? We, so the, the densities that we're taking, checking the compaction and the moisture content, that's in a one foot by one foot area. So it's, it's for general conformance, is, is how we're using that, general conformance. The proof roll, and that tells the story, you know? If you don't have stability, it's gonna show up on a proof roll. And we do the proof roll because we can't afford to take hundreds of tests on that entire, you know, section of, of open area or subgrade.
How, how are the moistures coming back on those densities? What?
So, um, no, they're not, they're not terrible. So the material that we have is a pretty silky material in, in some areas. And there's a, there's a real, there is a really wet gray, um, kind of lighter brown material that's, you know, comes up to the surface, and then it's, you know, located down below the surface in areas. The geotechnical engineer, he's done some hand auger borings, he's found it in different spots. And, um, even, even with the top being dried out, I guess, and I, I wouldn't say that it's, so it's around optimum moisture. It's maybe a point above, maybe a couple of points above. We still have material underneath that, once, once they place the top material back down, that water's coming right back up. So they're, they're running into some stability issues in that sense.
From groundwater basically penetrating back in?
Well, yes, yes and no, just more so the, the, the silt that's there, you know, holding water. And even, even when you can dry it down, you have to have a, that optimal moisture to get compaction and stability. It, it'd be different if there was an entire roadway to work with. You have the entire roadway, you can farm one side to the other, and you can, you know, get rid of some bad clay, move some better clay in. But they're working in a ten-foot, twelve-foot wide trench. They're just, there isn't a lot of room to flop material over, and they, we really don't want to put that material onto the street next to it. Cause they're gonna further damage that, trying to turn it, move it, and peel it back off. It, it comes down to, it's a seventy-eight hundred dollar, you know, decision where, let's say, five thousand of that is something that I, I think is necessary in front of, or especially if you go by the approach to the ball fields. That, they drove over that, and that, that bottom just squished straight out underneath tires.
I was gonna say, we already have a water problem right there, really, so.
Yeah.
Is this gonna help?
Well, like.
I mean, it's just, right.
It's not gonna fix it all.
No, it won't, but.
You're gonna stiffen up a ten, ten-foot trench, and the other side of the road's gonna be still crap.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm more worried about being able to pavement. So if we, if we don't do something on the subgrade, put base course on top, and the base course is moving like this, then we're running the base course. And if we, if we start out with that, it's not gonna be long before the asphalt breaks too. It's making sense.
I just wish it was, that we could do it, you know?
Do it right.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause we've already got such a water problem and.
Would you say it was already, funds are available in this, or already for this, or?
So, yeah, I mean, we're, what we're doing is we're stealing funds from the fourth and Sherman project. And that's, the more, the more funds we have to use here, the less money we have available for Sherman. Again, we, we do something, I want to make sure that presented in a manner that this, you know, my opinion is that we do this, and the reason is, is, right, to do it right, you know, kinda like Julie said, well, wanna do it right.
Yeah.
We don't do it, and you have a problem paving that road.
And to be honest, the, the right way to do it would have been to replace all the dirt, knowing that it was too wet and not meeting moistures. And that would have been the right way, cause I mean, you're, you're, you're taking, first of all, you got a culvert in there that's now around. You're not gonna get good compaction around, around culvert anyways. And you have material on top, you can dense that down, that isn't still stable. You put more material, that isn't stable, more material, that isn't stable. And now you're trying to cap it with the material that is more stable than the three below it. But yet you haven't fixed the root problem, and that's here. And it's gonna cost a hell of a lot more to rip it all back out and put in proper material. The problem is, is when, when we come to redo this road again, you're gonna have to pull all that material out, so, so you can get it stable.
But we're looking at three hundred and fifty thousand versus seventy-eight hundred.
I mean, if not. There's not a bottom. In some of those areas.
It's just mush even under the culverts?
The, the trench, the trenches, the trenches, I wouldn't say it's, you know, stable, stable. The trench is fairly stable. It's, it's outside that trench area and the undisturbed area of the road, where that's very, very unstable. That's where we're seeing the restability. And when, you know, when Geotech had taken a probe in, in some of those areas, you could stand on a push on it, you could just push it down two, three feet. So again, it's, it's wet on top, but there's, there's not a, there's not a hard pan in a lot of the areas. We have found some, I mean, there's some areas where, yep, there is. But, you know, that was one of the reasons why the cement treated subgrade worked so well on Main Street first, Glen, is because it, it created that, that twelve-inch bridging section. We didn't, we didn't have to worry about soil conditioning, didn't have to worry about drying out this material. Just because of that, you know, that silty nature of it, where if, if it's too wet, it's unstable, if it's too dry, you can't compact it. And you have to have it at an optimum condition to be able to get, to get it to do and perform the way you need it to.
I've watched a lot of dollars on the road go just to farm them.
Yeah, yeah.
Just get up, pack it down, just get up, pack it down.
Yeah. No, no, no. I'm, I'm in agreement with that. I, I think, I think soil conditioning, that, that should, I, I would prefer that more than symmetry. Cause I think that builds a better road, a truer road. Time and money.
Yeah, yeah. We're gonna have to do something to get it, cause otherwise, the brand-new asphalt will haul, haul apart in no time. Otherwise, in a couple of years, you'll be replacing it. Now, you're talking seventy-eight hundred now versus.
Yeah, okay.
That's, that's.
That driveway, that's why that road never, ever.
Right.
Well, you gotta think of though, we never had a way to get rid of that water for years either, so.
You know, you're just sat there, you know how bad that is.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we gotta do something, what do you think? I mean.
I think, I think council's on unanimous consensus of, on the seventy-eight to get that through. I think, I think council's on unanimous consensus of, on the seventy eight to.
Does that impact, uh, pay request number three, or is that gonna be number four?
Well, it would be in a future pay request. We've, we've already got bid items to complete the work, so they'd be completed underneath our already negotiated bid prices. Similar to that change order five adjustment quantities, we would have a final adjustment quantities on this project as well. And that, that contract value's gonna go up. This is more, more work we add into it.
So we still need to approve pay request three, correct?
So mine item C, okay, request for, number three for Alliance Construction. No further discussion or concern to get a motion approved. I'll make a motion. Okay, we got motion from Bungie. Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. All, same thing. Banner Associates, in Weston with Phase Four, High End Sewer and Storm Sewer Improvement Engineering Contract Amendment, Two and Six Streets, Storm Sewer Construction Administration.
This request for a contract amendment is for amendment to our engineering fees. And this is on the, the Phase Four and Five Comprehensive Immaculate Project. So I've, I've got two parts here, I'll go through the first part. I don't know if everybody's through this cover, ladies.
There, right here we are, okay.
This one, ten?
Yep.
Okay.
Create a, the top item is, it's titled Additional Construction Administrative Administration Services Due to HK, HK Solutions Rework on the manhole rehab. When HK Solutions sat in the council chambers here, they talked to the council about the rework that they were gonna complete. As part of that, they had said that they would pay any costs incurred by the city. So primarily those are gonna be engineering costs for Banner, to have an RPR on site to observe that work being performed. Um, it would be the same too, as the, the meetings that were conducted with HK on remedying their issue that they had, and then also the review of the documentation that they had sent post, um, reconstruction of manholes. And there's a breakout of those costs, something that is provided in this as well, and this has been sent to HK Solutions. The city had sent HK an invoice, and they haven't paid it, but they've indicated that they're gonna pay the city for these additional costs that have been incurred. So that total, um, is summed up to ten thousand seventy two dollars and fifty cents. So that would be additional fees that we're requesting to be included into our contract. Of course, we build the city, but we have an hourly to a max contract, so since those, you know, costs, I guess, were, were incurred, we would need to raise our contract value by that ten thousand dollars. Any questions on that?
Questions or things on it? Okay.
And the second part of this, and as I was talking, we added in the Sherman and Ford Sanitary Sewer, and the Sixth Street Storm Sewer. At that time, it was just for design services, and our discussion was if, you know, we've got some budget left for Second Street, let's see how far we can get into that construction budget, and, you know, at that time, we'll, we'll determine if we need additional budget to complete the storm sewer work. Well, we are at that point. So, right now, what I have is just to be up to September twenty first. We've incurred an additional four thousand eight hundred seventy dollars and seventy four cents engineering fees. And even since that date, you know, we've still been on the project, we've got an RPR that's been on the project each day. And so that, that cost will continue to go up. My intent here is just to have that discussion and include that in this amendment. When we move into next month, and the hope would be that we'd be close to close out on the project. Then we'd have a more definite, um, more definite final fee, I guess, your final cost, engineering cost, to complete the rest of the work of the project.
So then, when the final comes in, this four thousand eight seventy would be taken out of that then?
No.
It'll still show up?
Yeah, it'll still show up, so right now, I don't have, I don't have all the numbers in front of me here, so our, our contract was an hourly to a max contract of I can't remember the exact value, but of, of X amount. And we've reached that, we've reached that hourly to a max. And so that's part of the reason why I'm saying we need to raise that max, cause I, you know, Banner can't build the city anymore because we've reached our max. We can't build the city any longer until we would raise that contract value. Nobody raises via amendment. As much as I would love to not have to bill any more engineering fees, I don't think our controller will. So there, there will be some additional engineering fees, just to, just to finish out this, this project. And that'll be from September twenty first to, I mean, whenever the project is completed. And those, those fees are gonna be, so Spencer or whoever we have on site, they've charged by the hour, and then just be an hourly fee for them. Same thing with myself, you know, my, my time into pay requests, any other administrations, coordination with Alliance, that would be charged just by the hour. Um, same thing with surveying, so we still would have construction staking yet to be completed, that's all charged by the hour. And that, you know, I've got that hourly billing schedule in here as well, the hourly labor rates in there as well. And that's, you know, part of, I guess, what, what we had discussed back in spring, and, and what's in that previous contract. But there was never any intent that we were gonna have construction observation on this portion of Storm Sewer work. It, it was always part of the CIPP, the Second Street work, there was some work with the Storm Sewer as well. I think just, just as how the project is, you know, I guess, continued to be extended, or, or out of engineering fees.
So are you expecting it to go up January twenty twenty five, says?
Yeah, it, it will, in twenty twenty five it will. Now, our work
And that would be new projects, we would still be at the, yeah.
So I wouldn't expect anything to change from, and I wouldn't expect this project to go into twenty twenty five.
Okay.
So the, the Sherman, the Sherman Avenue and the Fourth Street Sanitary Sewer, that's covered underneath the Fourth, Fourth Street work. So that, that work was included in the Fourth Street work.
Questions or concerns? Black, the motion approved?
Go motion to approve.
Motion from Daniel. Second? One second? Pay request for, for the administration fee for Banner. Okay. Um, since I got you right here, Weston, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you go here, we're gonna move down to uh, six, and B, we're going to bonus that page, but we're gonna just, since you're here, we Bone Associates increased the annual city lifts, lifts, the city lift station insurance coverage from two hundred thirty six thousand five hundred dollars to half a million. That time here, we just go through all the insurance coverage, and Pete actually brought it to, to attention too. We don't think that, that will cover if we, if something significant happens to the lift station.
Right after, it's, it's right after the RAS, next quote, okay. It's an email message.
Right before you ask that. By doing so, if we, we, we increase it, it's gonna increase it to eighteen hundred dollars and eighty dollar annual rate. Kinda talked with Weston, and Weston talked about that, was that what you were talking about?
So I, I had talked to our wastewater department head, and a lot of this is just comparing the system that Colton has to other lift stations that have been replaced recently. Colton system is wet well, dry well, it's got, it's got a pit where you can go down, you operate the pumps, there's a control panel in there as well. And then the wet well, um, has a float system, but it's concrete structure. Now, really with that concrete structure, probably a not, not a lot of risk, I guess, with that concrete structure, other than maybe it would float out of the ground, um, that'd be pretty rare that that would happen. You, you could have a, a fire at the surface, and so that might be an issue for the cover, of course, if weaken that cover, the steel, the cover, and it, and it'd impact the concrete as well. More so your electrical system is probably something that would, you know, have a little bit more of a of a risk of being damaged by lightning, fire. So if you were to burn up your electric, electrical controls, um, your control panels, pumps, other, you know, measurement and level indicator devices, you're probably at somewhere around three hundred and some odd thousand dollars to replace that. But that's, that's new, that's putting something new in, you still have to go in there and do the demo on all the old stuff as well. And so, so there's also some costs with, with doing that. So I guess, I mean, we, we consider and say it's, you know, four hundred thousand, or four fifty, or maybe five fifty. Yet, um, it seems reasonable that five hundred thousand dollars would be adequate coverage. If you did have an event like that, you'd at least be covered to replace your electrical system, control system, and your pumps. The structure itself, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a million dollar structure to go replace, so. Kinda trying to find something that's, that's reasonable, I guess, for the city, and that provides you a little bit of assurance that it is, it is done, covered if something happens.
Two hundred and thirty six thousand, I mean, if something did happen, I mean, we still, we still have the funds to cover the rest of it, you know, I mean.
The sewer fund would.
Yeah, but
But, yeah.
It'd be two guys' kind of decision, I kinda brought it up, I, I think we should raise it to a half million, just to be covered. It's only gonna increase from years on out anyways, so.
And who knows how long it's been at the two thirty six five hundred, probably years and years and years.
Well, we kinda went through it.
What are we currently paying per year?
Our total?
Yeah, just for that.
They don't break it down like that. When he came, he just went through, um, the coverage amounts for each location, but not the price, and when we get the bill, it's just one.
What is that, Weston, isn't it for every million?
Well, so you're paying, you had about twelve million in coverage?
Uh, I think about eight.
Eight.
Yeah, and we pay about thirty without the internet, or the, um, if somebody hacks into our electronic stuff, the cyber stuff is about twelve thousand something. Uh, besides that, it's about thirty, I have it on here. Thirty five, so basically thirty six thousand.
Four to five thousand dollars for every million dollars of company.
We can leave it the same, table up, think five. This is something we should try to look into, getting bids, since this, when's our renewal?
No.
Oh, you're saying switching multiple cities and new companies?
Yeah, I, I would be, I mean, bid it out and see. So, is there, is there somebody else that carries this?
I mean, our entire insurance policy is carried by one, right?
Bone and Associates, we'd have to try and find that. We'd have to even look for a bone insurance company that would cover city.
That's cheaper than my homeowners going from three hundred to five hundred thousand, that eighteen is cheaper than my homeowners increase.
Like I said, I think
So, I, I mean, it seems comparative, but I think it seems reasonable.
Like I said, we can, we can leave it at the two hundred thirty six thousand, and then let sewer and water take it. Take it.
That's a big chunk out of there too, you know?
I would be okay with going to the five hundred, and then maybe down the road, looking at, maybe
For new bids.
Yeah, you know, because ki- kinda right now, if it's due, it's due.
Yeah, the new policy started on October first.
Yeah, we can always go out for bids anytime, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, we can go, we can go start window shopping for, and just
You just see what's out there.
Just keep and see.
Because if we've had this for the same people for how many hundred years? If there's somebody out there that's more comparative, more, I don't know, that's just my thought.
Maybe that's something you can, uh, beat out on, on your city administrator. Little chat thing, and see
Who they use, yeah.
See what all the other municipalities
Yeah, that's
See what other municipalities, would they need help, it's, I don't I mean
Yeah, I haven't heard anything.
Who has that coverage or the ability to cover all of us like that, so.
Yeah, yeah, I guess I'm not opposed to raising it.
No, not opposed at, at all, because I don't want that to come out of the fund, because
Well, exactly, so it's the worst case, we talked about it, and Weston and I, like, the only, only thing that we could really think about, it was either lightning, fire. I mean, I don't know what else would start. I mean, we're just trying to think of what else would
Where that house is sitting, it could flood very easily, but that creek that's there, I've seen the water in that way past that building
Yeah.
Back there, so I mean, you're talking, could flood back there, burn up, you know, the electrical, if it gets into the water.
There is, uh, flood coverage that is an additional rider on only the lift station, no, no other
Which would bring us to a half million, or six hundred thousand, correct? That's flooded, that's a flooded.
Yeah, if it flooded.
I mean, I would only assume that stuff, I mean, that's a wet environment, it should be in water resistant.
I've seen that creek back there, where my sister lives, that's been cleared up
No.
It should be
It should be water resistant of some sort.
It should be, right, yeah.
I mean, nothing's perfect, but
Once that, if that lift station didn't say lift, that should be in the, I mean, with that, I mean, that, that proved wasn't really groundwater bringing it, I mean, it was underground water.
I don't know, I don't know if it'll be covered. And the, the lift station's been in there how long?
Oh, forever, hundreds.
So it's, it's pretty unlikely, and they, they did, you know, they did the cals on it to ensure that it wouldn't be a point in the structure. I'm sure they did.
Isn't it concrete, is it a concrete building, or is it wood?
It's all concrete, it's no, it's no pit, it's not the, there's not an actual building, building.
I think they actually used
What's the building background of that?
That's the compound.
Oh, okay.
This is down, that road that goes down then, down in there.
Oh, way back there, oh, gotcha.
There is, there is an underground structure too. structure to dry well.
Almost looks like a city well thing, or, you know.
Okay, I know where you are.
So we got about that then, moving on, okay. All right, well, that is it for you, Weston.
No, no, it's the flood.
The flood map?
No. Haven't we been talking about that the, we might need to start talking about updating our
waste, waste one.
Flood something that was done in two thousand and sixteen.
So the city's facility plans, the twenty sixteen facility plan that was prepared and that, you know, started this phase one through phase six. So now the city's on phase five, form five of that project. The phase six part of that was, was pretty high level. And when, when we went through that report and you evaluated the water facilities and wastewater facilities, it was, here's your, here's your top priorities. And really, that, I mean, everybody's credit, we're, I mean, we're there. We've gotten those top five priorities completed on that plan. Now, moving forward, I mean, there's, there's further things that, that can be done and do need to be done. One party item is likely going to be the, the, the booze. So Jared, and if he was here, he'd, he'd be able to explain how he's being regulated right now. But they're, they're starting to monitor more of the discharge characteristics in the wastewater. And in time, they will do this. They're going to start putting restrictions on the amount of nitrates that you can release in your wastewater. They're going to put some phosphorus restrictions on nutrient levels. And with that, your, your pond system's going to be no longer be adequate enough to provide the amount of treatment that you need to provide. Now, if this doesn't happen next year or two years, this is something that's like five to ten years out. And so there, it's, it's something that the city does need to think about is, okay, what do we want to do with our wastewater treatment? We, we can, we can retrofit something with the pond system, that, that can be done. But that, of course, means that you have to have more of a mechanical type of treatment system. And that mechanical treatment system could be something like a, like a, it's called a Sager system. But it's, it's using filtration and aerators to further treat and, and, you know, has a removable process to it to clean that wastewater to be able to discharge into the Colton Creek. There's other options out there. I mean, there, there's, right now, the big, the big option discussed is regionalization. Sending water to a regional facility. And that's, you know, that's part of maybe the discussion that needs to be had is when do we want to start looking into this? When do we want to start looking at it and coming up with, I guess, a plan for that five to ten year outlook on providing reliable wastewater treatment, something that's going to meet the requirements of the state? And the ponds right now have been fairly dry, of course, we had a wet spring, but that was followed by a couple of dry periods. And the, the ponds, if, if there is a substantial amount of growth, the ponds are going to be at capacity. That twenty sixteen study that was performed, the ponds were near capacity at that time. But there's been a lot of substantial improvements, so a lot of that infiltration, inflow into the storm or the sanitary system, that's been mitigated. And so we opened up a lot more capacity in the system. But you know, the fifty homes added on, if there's a, if there's an, you know, an industry that wants to come in and tell them if you don't have the facilities to serve that industry, then you're going to have to deny any request for service.
Which the city is, we are a part, you guys know, we did receive that grant with Crooks through the feds for the twenty-three million dollars to do a regional waste management system. But we're trying to get the logistics of how this is going to work. The line pricing. This is something that we don't need to add, like Weston said, next year or something, this is something that we're looking at. Eight, ten years down the line, but at least Colton will be ready for it.
How, how long are those funds available?
Indefinite.
Indefinite.
But the problem is they lose their value every year that it goes by.
Yeah.
So we got to work with some set of urgency, but Colton's not ready to connect right now. So we've been talking with Harvard. Now the new ones, we're talking with connecting to Sioux Falls. Just seeing what it would be, you know. So there is discussion forward progress.
Who, who else around has one, Madison?
Well, you gotta remember, the problem is, we got this with Crooks.
Oh, yeah.
So it's the miles of pipeline, so.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking who has mechanical treatment. Darapids does.
But they'd have to, we'd have to pay for, you know, an additional facility at their.
And that, that is probably, that's the importance of looking at and studying it. What is a viable option? So Darapids at one time was, you know, evaluating the option of connecting to Sioux Falls. Well, they didn't do that, they built their own plant. Crooks is in a similar situation, they're seeing some growth and, you know, after annexing in additional properties, especially if they're industrial users, they're going to use up their capacity in their system as well. And so Colton, you know, potentially in time, they will, you know, they'll be there to. The growth, the growth is going to continue. I mean, it'll continue to go out to Crooks and continue through Lions into, into Colton. But you know, part of that, we talked about it, a ten year plan, you know, I said there was a twenty sixteen study. It was, it was done in twenty fifteen, finalized in twenty sixteen. Well, we're already eight years out. And same thing, two in twenty thirty-four. We're going to have to have somewhat of a plan on what, what will be next for the, for the wastewater needs.
Yeah, you guys would never like to, any of those, let me know, I can give you, when we'll have the next one, but like I said, it's there is no discussion of dates of when this is starting, this is getting the logistics of how the system is going to work. And I mean, we don't even know yet either, so.
Well, and then one of the, one of the meetings that, you know, we had discussion, it, it was left at, okay, the potential communities, which Crooks and Colton are the primary ones. Go out and evaluate what your needs are. So, you know, that, that way you know when you're, you know, when you're when you're looking at the two different alternatives, what is that cost? What is that cost to benefit ratio? Is that, you know, is there more of a benefit to make this connection to this regional, you know, treatment facility? Does, does this rate structure provide a better benefit for what your current future usage is going to be? You know, that was part of the discussion, there's going to have to be some upfront costs. I know this is a grant, but there's going to have to be some upfront costs to try to figure out how to move forward with the grant. It's, it's somewhat difficult for community council to just look at the grant, jump into it and then try to start figuring everything out when you're in the mix of trying to administer a grant and project and whatever that might look like.
Because we're still trying to figure out who can administrate the grant, too.
Yeah, there's.
So Metro doesn't know if they can handle it. I mean, Seacog thought about it, I mean.
Can you go to the tour on Wednesday? They're doing the regional, I'm going to the infrastructure one, but the municipal league has one of the water treatment plan and how it affects the regions around the area Sioux Falls. Might, I don't know, would it be?
That we can go.
They might have a projection, I don't know if it would be beneficial or not, but.
No, it would, it would definitely be beneficial.
You've gone to anything like that, toured it or projections, no?
Sorry, we're not on Wednesday?
Yeah, the South Dakota Municipal League, they're doing it at one thirty AM Wednesday.
Yeah. Home has been proactive with Crooks. Our plan down the line, you know, this is nothing that we, we're looking at, so we're not connecting to this in three years, I mean, we have years and years of planning and.
Well, Crooks has already updated their facilities plan, haven't they?
And that's, you know, they, while they're working on, right now, they're in the, they're in the works on updating theirs. And part of that update is incorporated in an alternative for regionalization. And that's, that's where, like, right now, at this juncture, to try to determine how to move forward, because there's been a couple of meetings now. But there hasn't been a lot of progress, I would say, because there's just a lot of uncertainty. Well, what are, what are the actual needs, where, where's the benefit at? What's the timeline look like? Trevor, I think you, you had mentioned trying to put together some goals.
Yeah.
On what, what are, what are the goals to try to step through this, determine what would be best for Colton? And part of it is, I, I really, I think we need to do a, do, do an update to the facility plan. It's, it's a facility plan, but it's a feasibility study. Is it feasible to, to, to join in on the regionalization? To join in on the, you know, regional wastewater district, whatever it might be called? And we don't know that until we, we look at it. And there's, with, with a facility plan, we can look at that. The city had gotten a small community grant in twenty sixteen when they did their previous facility plan. They'd be eligible for assistance again. I think it's eight thousand or ten thousand dollars. But I'm like, I mean, we can't do a facility plan for ten thousand dollars, we just, we just can't. What we give you is, is, is not going to be valuable at that price range. But because right now, it's something interested in, I could bring a proposal next month and say this is what a facility plan update would be for cost. Is that something you want to pursue or not? And we'd just be a wastewater one at this time. I think there's still some water improvements that, you know, have been identified and haven't been completed yet. And so maybe it would need to be updated this time, but that's, you know, the, the wastewater is probably on the forefront right now, just primarily because of the grant opportunity that's out there for the city.
Well, and we're kind of, if Crooks is getting their cost figures together, it only would make sense if we have ours, because we are kind of, we're looped in with them, so if they want to move forward with.
Well, we'd have to surrender our part, but I don't know if that, how that grant was written, I mean, the way that grant's written, it's with Crooks and pretty much in Lena, Lions running through Lions. Because that was how it was pretty much written, that go there, then Lions would have the option to connect because they're in the largest drinking aquifer that the city is, you know. And then go to Crooks, then after that, it's whichever direction they want to go from there. But yeah.
We need to think about it, because Pete, at that one meeting said that.
Well, yeah, they, they mean, they are making them test and that's what all the other cities are certainly get kind of, that are, and still in the lagoon system, we're getting kind of nervous on what standards are they going to hold us to? And then, I mean, we looked at the other option of doing a Sager system, I mean, that was, what, two years ago, Weston, that we were looking at then?
Yeah, so it's the same time.
But that was about seven million dollars to do. And and then Saul, yeah, then we met with Senator Thune on this and he liked the, the projects and then he told us to put it on the federal side for an ask, it was a shot in the dark and that twenty-three million earmarked towards Crooks and Colton, so. So at least it's a, like I said, it's nothing that we have to stick with, but at least it's there with something to move forward. We have to, but I think I agree with Weston, we probably should do a, some sort of study, feasibility study of how much actual truly need is not just shooting from the hip and saying, yeah, we should probably join, you know, do this. So.
And you said there was grants out there for, to cover a portion of it?
To cover a portion of the study. I, I, I think it's eight thousand dollars. Because what's, they'll kick in, it's called, it's called a small community planning grant.
What do you think that total cost will be?
To do a facility plan?
Yeah.
We're going to bring figures next month, weren't we? Yeah, but I mean.
I mean, not to waste his time.
Yeah, thirty thousand.
And that's for the full facility plan?
Yes. Now, of course, and I, again, I want to go through, you know, the individual that actually, that's actually going to do a facility plan. I, I did the facility plan in twenty sixteen, so I did that, but I, I likely won't be doing this one. I'll, I'll be assisting with it, but there'll, there'll be somebody else doing that. Now, we've already, we already have pretty good data, you know, a lot, a lot of the pipes are rehabbed already. So for the collection system itself, I mean, there's really only a small remaining portion of the collection system. A majority of that facility plan is going to be wastewater treatment. And so I'd say thirty thousand, I mean, that's probably on the high end, I don't, I don't know. I, I'm pretty certain that's about the cost of.
Well, at least. I mean, you'll have a bigger source next month.
Yeah.
So, I mean, at least it's something that's on the table for discussion, so. Okay. Any other questions for Weston? Nope.
If you are going to go to the South Dakota Municipal League, so banner's still on the climate appreciation supper at Ode to Food in Sioux Falls.
Oh, are they?
Yeah, Wednesday, Wednesday at six PM. Ode to Food.
Where's this tour stuff start out at?
They don't, you pick one, and I picked the stages of infrastructure in Sioux Falls and how it affects the communities around it. That's one I picked. And then there was a water treatment one, and there was another water one. And then there was, what was, I get everything, what the other ones, but it was nothing to do with water infrastructure, it was.
That's, I can look it up, too.
Yeah, it's just, it has it on the website.
If, if you, if you want to, if you want to join us Wednesday night, maybe just on Michaela, normal. Uh, you can bring plus ones, drinks, food. Cool fluid power for lunch.
You have got, you're, see, you're all ready for retirement, you know, all the lunches and the suppers.
Yeah, sure. Well, thanks to you guys.
You know, you can bring your news next time.
No.
A lot, the whole agenda of pay requests, additional costs.
Extra money.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what, though, I did bring a change order, that was for a decrease of fifty-five.
Yes, that was good.
I'm just feeling really poor for the council right now.
All right, have a good day, guys. I think we get to let you go, too.
Thanks, guys.
All right, moving on to line one, donation from Diane Hovens Memorial for Colton Bowl.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Very cool.
What you guys want to do with those funds, we want to put it in a CD.
That's what we do with the last money, right?
We can wrap it into another one, I guess.
Where do you open that CD?
Yeah, did you get that complete?
Yeah, but there's no reason this can't be a part of it.
It can't, it could be added to it, right?
I think so.
Well, we put thirty-five thousand in.
Oh.
So.
Oh, yeah, I mean, because we had thirty or some whatever, so.
I'd say we do that, just have it on one spot.
Yeah, I think.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Uh, me and the county sheriff's hours and report.
I doubt that. If so, it would have been somebody breaking and entering.
Yeah. I don't think there was anything out of the ordinary, was it?
This one also has that quarterly, quarterly report.
Okay.
I gotta be home for them to come find me there.
Try before their log of the, like, the printout of their.
Yep.
What are these? They're on the front of the very, the very front of the package.
Those are what Sophie submits to these three pages to Danner.
For the, those projects.
For reimbursement.
Yeah, for these projects.
Yes, for those projects.
Yep.
To the 2025 liquor license renewals for Classic Corner Dollar General and TJ's Bar. You guys like to do them?
Can we do them together?
Yeah, we can do them together.
Perfect.
Do you need a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve them. Before we approve, do we have to do anything with the fire station?
It's individual.
Yeah, they do special. Um. No fees on these?
Yeah, there's fees.
They're just not written on the bottom, so.
No, I didn't write them out. It's whatever we decided last year at this time.
Yeah, I don't remember what those were.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I don't remember the exact dollar, off the top of my head. But, but I know they were, they were lower last year than they were going to be this year.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because they went up, because we didn't want to raise it all at one time or something like that.
Yeah, we did that, like, how we did it.
Well, it'd be nice to know.
Yeah, we can probably, you pull that up.
Yeah, I'm looking, just trying to remember when. Just felt this time last year.
Anyway, you go on the, we'll just move on to, I'll just get away to my, the Colton Library, what's the big date? October 19th from 10 noon.
Don't forget about the grant from the park, or the tree grant, too.
And then, I am J, see how it will be closed, have a day on October 8th and 11th, and all day on October 9th and 10th and 14th and the 23rd. For the South Dakota Municipal, Municipal, municipality league annual conference and Native American Day. So. The DNR community forestry grant. We did get that applied in there, what do you want for discussion on that?
We still have a grant to use.
Yeah.
Right, it expires, we have to have the five grand and the five grand by 12/31.
Yes.
Okay, when do you plant a tree?
No, this is for tree trimming.
Yeah, that, this is all done?
No.
No.
It's not, because what we did is removed trees, that's not allowed.
Oh, that isn't included?
That, that project was not included, because you can only, to existing, you can plant new or you can trim what's existing, but it doesn't pay for removals.
So all those removals on the south side of the park there?
An underlying made them there, but they didn't really.
No, they didn't make clear.
Right. Must be the time here, because Anderson's going by our place like crazy right now.
Yes, yeah, I've seen.
With big trees.
Planning, we are looking at next year, planting some trees, um, what is that, on, on the park side?
Yep, so we got the.
By the baseball fields.
East baseball field, a little baseball field.
But then we'll lose the map.
No, that's, it'll be for next year's grant.
The next year's grant.
The one we just applied for last month.
Yeah. So it's the same grant, but it'll be for planting.
Okay.
So what do we need to do with this?
This is tree trimming.
When do you, we just got to, I mean, if you guys want to move forward, finding some trees to trim in the park, we can do that, clean up some trees.
Or does this grant just go back, if you don't use it?
Yes.
The worst part is, is we spent $11,000 on a hiccup.
So it's just kind of.
On what?
On a hiccup.
Yeah.
Oh.
So I think we just kind of let it go back, and that's another five.
Well, here, here's my question, we, we did trim some of those trees, I mean, we removed quite a few. But we also trimmed the ones still to the south.
Yeah. So I wonder if we can get reimbursement on this one, I think we can.
Some, some at least.
Where did we trim some to the south? Like, well, there's this, there's a map in here of the park getting there.
So if you spend $1,000, if, we get $1,000, and then we put in $1,000, we don't have to do the five grand, do we?
Yeah, we have to do.
A lot, a lot of them were.
The whole thing, no, that's what I meant.
Yeah, we can just do a thousand and spend another $1,000.
Yeah, if we could get them trimmed and cleaned up, you know, that's what I was, but I don't, I can't remember what the bill was.
Anyways. Yeah, they removed a lot of these trees, but I'd be willing to bet the trees that are still right here, they're cutting little branches off of some.
Well, they had to, yeah, night of my list, didn't they, I had my bill.
No.
We can ask Chris for a night of my bill.
Yeah, because he just gave me one thing, like the insurance.
I'll contact Chris for a night of mine.
Yeah, because, because, I mean, there had to be some kind of trimming.
Yeah.
I mean, to, to the trees that are still there.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you're not going to knock down a big tree and not take out the dead ones right next to it.
Just ask the guy, that's all we do.
Yeah, no, I, I got a good relationship with Chris, so I'll just say, hey, Chris.
I didn't know they, yeah, I was like, I just.
But otherwise, otherwise, I kind of agree with Matt, it's not, so, we got another $5,000 to spend again next year.
Yeah.
Right. So, let's not.
If we don't have, I mean.
The next year project will be a bigger improvement, so what we looked at, the.
I mean, I mean, I mean, the only other thing we could do is maybe plant one or two, so next year's bill won't be as big.
We could do that, too.
No, we can't.
Why? Because this says trimming on it?
Yep.
Oh.
You can't change the application.
That's why I said, like, can we just go in there and get, I don't know, clean out?
If I can't use it, we just send it back.
We'll just send it back, yeah. We're done with it, I think we just send it back, we take our.
I, I think we should try to see if we can't get an itemized, I mean.
Well, yeah, no, 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 not sending it all back, but we got an itemized and, and not trying to find an additional $5,000 to spend or whatever.
Yeah, because, I mean, yes, it's a $5,000 grant, but how does that work? Is it like anything else, where you spend $5,000 over here, removing the trees, you get $5,000 worth of trimming for free? You know, I mean, it's, it's, you know.
Yeah, no, this.
I don't know.
Next year's application, we stated that we're a plant team, I think it was up to, well, we had in there up to eight, but we don't have to use it all. Pete went and got a number from that guy that's over up by Renner. I can't think of his name, but.
No, I don't think he did.
Yeah, because he emailed it to me.
Yeah, I thought it was a different one.
That's not Ashley's, is it?
No.
I can tell you.
We just really trimmed the trees down to the ground.
Well, if you love to stump, you trim, right?
Yep.
One quote that he got was for smaller trees, and one was for bigger trees, so I tried to get two other quotes for bigger trees, and I had a heck of a time, nobody wants to give me quote prices for next year's trees.
Hmm.
Sure. But I put, you know, I, I said, yes, we understand that the, the price is subject to change. They know that, it's just, that's how it has to be quoted on prices right now.
Here it is, so it's with Dakota Tree Nursery out of Renner. They're 15 to 20 foot trees. They come out to about $1,500 apiece, $1,550. So it'd be about $1,2,400, which, we just put that in application, we don't have to use all of, we don't have to go to the $12,000, but looking to by the, the pool house, one over by the batting cage to leave some pressure off the sun on that side, and then the little fall field over there, because there is no shade over there. And then Pete was looking on the other side of the pool house, kind of in that, oh, the area over there, in the northwest corner, some over there. So, which I thought 15 to 20 foot trees transplant at a $1,500 piece, I thought that was pretty damn good.
That's the highest quote that we've received.
That was the highest one?
Yes.
Well, this is the only one that I've gotten, then.
Yes, so I have to do. I, I got a quote by text message from Paul's Nursery, and that one, I believe, was for $1,250 per tree.
How tall?
Same.
Same.
And then I got a quote from, um, I'm gonna say it was called Country Acres, maybe, but it was for substantially less, like $250 a tree.
What?
What?
Yeah.
It must just be the tree, not the transplanting.
Or that's just the transplanting.
Yeah, you're right, okay, so for the tree, let's say the tree costs $250, to install it is double the price. So $500. Yep.
Let's see.
Let's see.
But trying to get these people to give me a written, well.
Yeah, we can't have a verbal.
Nope, right.
Yeah, so, anyways, that's next year's project, so we're just X the tree grant, well, we're not going to X it, we're going to.
Try, try to use as much as we can.
Yeah.
I mean.
Did what we've already done.
Yeah.
Recoup something.
Yeah, try to recoup something out of it.
Going back to I am G, like, we're not using it, we need to get the dollar more.
Oh. Yes, so. Okay. So the off sale has a minimum of $300 and a maximum fee of $500 per South Dakota codified law, and the on sale has a minimum of a dollar for each person residing within the municipality as measuring, as measured by the last preceding federal census, and maximum removal fee of $1,500. So, 2024 off sale liquor license for Classic Corner was approved at 500, was approved at 500. 2024 off sale for TJ's was approved at 500. On sale for TJ's was approved at $1,000, and then was set to increase to 1,500 for 2025.
For on sale?
Yes.
Okay.
And. And then a wine insider for Dollar General approved at 500.
All right. Everybody get that follow up?
Mm-hmm.
50 approved.
I'll make a motion.
That was for Sean Ryan.
Yep. No, Julie.
Or Julie.
Yeah, me, sorry.
Yep.
Okay, moving on to Rastak conservers and switch for City Hall.
So it's really here for your FYI approval, because we didn't have any choice in updating this, as our server and switch, we were going to needing, need to look at replacing them next year, at least by October, when Windows 11 has to go live for everyone. But during a backup, the server failed. So luckily, James was able to save, get our stuff saved, and he tried to take the giant server off the wall back there, and he took it home over the weekend and fixed it up as best as he could, but it still failed when he tried to do another backup. So when you replace the server, you have to replace the switch, and they were refurbished when they were purchased, and I know at least one of them said it was from like 2011. So. The actual price came out to for both of them, $11,000.
Could be $10,000 something.
Well, it, it, sorry, it includes the $675 of our normal.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, yeah.
$11,000, what was it?
It's on our claims on $11,000.
Oh, okay.
$6.74.
Oh, yeah, it was really like $10,000 over there, and there's, yep, minus the $675 regular monthly fees.
So. So motion approved.
Oh, you just want this one approved individually, right?
We're going to do them together.
Oh, okay.
No, not the claims, but yeah, both Rastak.
Oh.
New server and switch.
Yeah, all approved.
Motion from Julie. One second. What was the paper say?
Right.
All those, of course, on the side.
And then you have your verbal quote, right, about that tree cutting down?
Oh, yes, yep, and then there's a, you guys notice on Pete and Michaela, we're getting some concerns on Hawthorne Park, there's a tree that's blocked, I went and took a picture of it, there's a tree that is blocking the stop sign.
That's up this street to the end.
Yep. So it's 600 bucks to take it out.
Okay.
Is that in the boulevard?
It is. But it still falls under homeowners.
Doesn't fall under city, so we couldn't use some of that grant to trim that?
No, because we're going to be removing.
Can't we just trim it?
No. You can't trim that.
That skinny little tree?
Yeah.
Well, it's not skinny in person.
No.
It's really high up.
Which property zone? It'd be Bill Ferguson House.
Okay.
And it's blocking what?
The stop sign.
The stop sign.
We can screw the stop sign, too.
Stop sign, it would be cheaper, oh, yeah.
I agree, let's move the stop sign.
So this is how big the tree is, I mean, it's pretty.
Yeah, can't we move the stop sign?
He has trimmed it as much as he can, as far as height.
Can't we put a stop?
Apparently trimmed it the right way.
Hey, can't we put a stop ahead sign in front of the tree?
Good.
It'd be cheaper than taking that tree out.
I don't know.
I don't know the legality of that.
I don't know.
I was wondering, can we nail a stop sign to the tree, like, so, you know?
I think that could be on a pole certain height, I don't know.
Put it in front of the tree.
What if we just go on, yeah, what?
I don't know.
I don't know, is it a thing or not, I mean, is it certain?
Stop sign, but then put another stop sign, like, on it, so you know, like.
Or just put a sign in front of the tree saying, stop ahead. I mean, there's the stop sign, nobody stops for the stop sign anyway, you know, but.
She can't see it.
There's kind of.
I, and the thing is, I don't want to open a can of worms, so, pre-trimming down boulevards.
Yeah, that, that, that's where you get into that thing, it's like, technically, it's the homeowner's responsibility to maintain the boulevard. Because then.
Trees probably linger longer than that stop sign.
Oh, I'm sure.
Well, I did, that's, that's, that's stop sign, I think, got put in.
Oh, it hasn't been that long.
Well, it was after the accident.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
Well, it would then been 2004, 2005. That would be the Orville property, though, Ferguson's, Orville's. Well, it's on the Ferguson, the other one's across from Orville.
Ferguson's is on Fifth. Well, Ferguson's is on fifth.
Is that the Ordo one?
Yeah, Ferguson's is.
Okay, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, you're right, yep. Cause Ordo also had that tree tip over there in the storm. Did that ever get fixed, like good or so?
Where?
Yeah, yeah.
To the probably south fifteen.
Then everybody else that has a tree in the boulevard is gonna be like, well, you removed theirs, why don't you remove mine?
So why can't we have Ordo's take care of that tree? You know what she's gonna say, move the stop sign?
Yep.
Or put the stop sign on the other corner.
There're plenty of legalities.
You put the stuff in the other corner.
You should, on on the, go on the east.
Oh, yeah, you could rotate them.
Move ninety degree.
Yeah.
As long as there's no, I mean, nothing says which road has to have the stop sign.
No.
Oh.
So we could put it on the other corner on like Oberg's corner.
Yeah, you'd have to move both.
Looking that up, yeah.
Move the stop sign to a different corner.
But.
Cause that's the, that's the problem.
I'm pretty sure we we know the ordinance that that falls under.
Yeah.
The forty foot clear zone.
Yeah, that was my next thing as we start, we do it that then. You're in the floodgates. So, okay, moving on. We already did uh the agenda of this for proof, proof claims.
Are the porta porta potty is gone from the park now?
No.
No, we just keep those ones over by the basketball court.
Oh, there's one.
Yeah.
We still have camper.
I think he left yesterday.
We have another one.
Yeah, cause we were putting cans in the.
Well, the city doesn't leave the bathroom open, so if you need to go to the bathroom at the park, that's the only place to go is at that one porta potty.
And that's, that's good to leave it there. We don't leave it there, we can pick it up like.
How much longer are we gonna have Tobias here?
Oh, he's gonna need to be here for a little while longer, you guys can talk to him about that at the budget meeting.
Who's Tobias? Oh, never mind, I know who he is.
Yep. Cause I thought initially he was saying like forty or fifty hours is what he thought.
Yeah.
Well, that was before he had a look.
This is going back, like not just from. A couple of years, going back even further.
No, this would just to fix um.
Should be from the audit forward.
Right, yeah, to.
When I'm talking with him.
Oh, yeah.
Previous that he can't go forward because it's not in there.
So he's an employee for the city, basically.
Contractor. Yes. He did provide an itemized bill if you'd like to see it.
I mean, I'm sure he's put the hours in.
Why is the classic corner one on here twice for seven hundred and seven dollars and ninety four cents, the caster's city vehicle?
I started on the back too.
There's a couple repeats on there too, Tobias is on there twice.
Yep, on the front page and second page.
Two pages or three?
It just flips over.
Over on the backside, I'm just saying, I don't have a back.
Well, some people have a backside and some people have two pages. Okay, so maybe when it split out the one and two pages, it did that because.
A A one portable is on here twice also.
Have it here, like here. Oh, no, the seven hundred is up here, classic corner.
So. It basically is the whole top half.
Let's help to help is on there twice. Alliance Construction's on there twice.
Banner Associates, I mean.
I don't know why.
Yeah.
Access Systems on there twice. Badger meters.
It looks like it just copied this section and this section.
You make a motion approve, eliminate all the duplicates.
Well, on the main, on the actual list, there is no duplicates. So it must just be on the copy.
I haven't got through the front of the page yet.
Like a section, there's this section and this section are the same.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So what do you have for a total, Michael?
It's on the back or second page.
Where does it start the duplicate portion at? Banner Associates banner.
It's Alliance.
Alliance is.
Right, right after Tobias. And then it starts over.
You know, you got South Dakota Health above that's on there twice, Health Pool, South Quarter's on there twice.
Mm-hmm, two fifty one.
Yeah, but see, here you got Tobias.
Seventy.
And then you start Alliance Construction back up here. And then this, this in the back page is all the same as this.
And then twenty four. Okay, yep. Yep, all the way to Core Trust, it looks like.
Yep, and then down to Core Trust, yep.
The actual total, for some reason, I don't know why I doubled that, is two oh nine. Uh zero four one point six eight.
Okay, yeah, so that's off too.
I have no idea how how it, how that happens.
Computers.
Make you start handwriting it all out.
So when I was trying to print the packets on Friday. Then all of a sudden it told me I had to change this part that we don't have. So when I called today, they checked with every tech and they checked with every warehouse in this area and nobody has this part. So luckily we have that backup printer, but I don't know, I was trying to print it out. That's why stuff is, some stuff is in color, some stuff is not in color.
Going forward, get a motion approval, move all the duplicates with the balance of. Hundred nine thousand, forty one thousand and forty one dollars and sixty.
I'll make a motion to approve with the adjustments to remove all the duplicates.
Motion from Diane. Give a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye. So we're just gonna kinda talk about uh two twenty twenty four, we can't really. Do a whole lot with it.
Just how it's gonna protect.
I have the whole breakout, I think that the Secretary of State and Attorney General work on together or something like that. They go over all the ballot questions sitting on top of my desk, this is their breakdown of initiated measure twenty eight. Looks like from two thousand twenty three data, Colton gets approximately fifteen thousand dollars. From the sales tax, uh from the grocery tax. That we we would potentially lose out of our budget if.
I figured it'd been more than that.
Would it do?
Yes.
Because it says for human consumption, there's.
So there's, there's gonna be a lot, there's gonna be a lot of. Uh legals on this because they're trying to, now they're trying to decide does tobacco fall into?
Does tobacco, does alcohol?
Doesn't. They're still gonna tax the alcohol. If you read the municipal magazine you get, they break them down really good in there.
Yeah, I would, but my, my fear is it's gonna come into a form of an income tax.
Oh, yes.
Same here.
Yes.
What they're heading for, so.
And we can't go out and.
Say how to vote, but.
We can't go out there and advertise on how to vote on it, but.
Personally, you can.
Personally, I can, yeah.
Your personal opinion, you're free to. Say.
But. Yeah, it's gonna hurt a lot of communities.
I know two falls was looking at millions.
I think it was twenty 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 seven percent or twenty some percent of their budget would be gone. So. You gotta think too, if this does go through.
It says the cities can still tax.
Which were not, there is, there is paperwork on there that you can do, but. Patrick's like, just hold off right now.
Yeah, I'm 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 just saying, what it says in here is we can still continue.
There, there is, we wanna hear on how this all goes out before we do that, um. Cause.
Yes. There's no guarantee that municipalities will receive any of that money, right? So if we have to look at our budget and where can we take, you know, at least fifteen thousand dollars from, it's gonna have to be something that's. More of a like to have than they.
Well, it'd be split up over first, second, and third penny, I mean.
We'll cross that bridge when we get.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ho- hopefully the public is smart.
Well, it's gonna.
There's not a lot to talk about it.
But that's gonna, the biggest thing is how they're gonna come out and word it though, too. You've been on some of them bet measures where it's a vote no, but you really want it.
I know, it's very confusing, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, it 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 says on here, vote yes to adopt and uh adopt the initiative me- measure, vote no, leave South Dakota law as it is.
But I just think that um. Um, on the bottom left, when it says, well, it looks like sixty percent, sixty six percent of South Dakotans, uh you know, support. Repealing the grocery tax, well, yeah, that sounds great, but then you have to think about the flip side, you know? Like you're, they're gonna get their money one way or another.
Oh, yeah, the groceries are gonna go up and then we won't get the tax, don't we?
Yes, well, I I mean, it.
Yeah, the state's gonna get their money one way or the other.
Oh, absolutely, that's what I mean.
And and as far as I'm concerned, let's like, let's let the tourists that come here and buy groceries and food. Pay some of it for us.
That's, that's, that's my next concern is there is no desire for economic growth in the community because.
You're not getting anything.
You're not getting anything for it.
Not bringing any tax or none to your.
Um unless it's prepared.
Unless it's prepared.
I'm I'm concerned about how it would impact uh our summer activities and. The bus for the pool or even the pool.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
The question is, is how much do we actually sell in groceries alone? Yeah.
And some from Classic Corner too.
Yeah, a little bit from classic, but a lot of the food, classic sells as prepared. You know, I'd say probably the majority of their food sales wise.
Yeah.
Dollar General, they they sell a lot of stuff.
Yes, they do.
So, okay. We've done a second meeting date for a budget, twenty twenty five. Uh Wednesdays and Thursdays are out for me.
Tuesdays and Thursdays are out for me, next week is out for me.
I'm on the, what, seventeen through the twenty second.
It's gotta be in October, the right?
Yeah, yeah. November, I can't remember what day in November we had to have it in, but.
Okay, one question I have is, are we gonna get more detail oriented?
Tobias is working as as much as he can on trying to get.
Well, I'm trying to have have a day that he can come.
Well, well, I know, but I mean, it it don't.
But I talked with him, so his his whole deal is like, just get get the, get the budget approved. And we can make appropriations.
You're you're going one, George?
The seventeenth through the twenty second.
Yeah, but making appropriations, I mean.
Do the twenty third, that's what.
Nope, I'm out that day.
Not on a Friday.
Twenty eighth?
Oh, no.
That's for Remington's birthday, but I, that's fine.
Ballot game that night.
Monday.
I think that's the last one.
Oh, how about the tenth or the eleventh?
Thursdays are out.
I mean.
I'm out Wednesday.
Monday or a Friday.
So what about the twenty first?
I'm up the twenty four.
Twenty four Tuesday.
That's a Thursday.
Oh, sorry.
I mean, we can do thirty, early Thursday. We can do it.
I can't do.
You're bringing us all stakes, if I'm taking work off. I can do an early Thursday.
Like, what's early?
Five.
I'll be still.
Cause you throw darts too, right?
And then Wednesday I got Quinn's got gymnastics, which.
So you're thinking the twenty fourth at five?
I won't go and make that work.
How about the twenty ninth?
Does that work?
Twenty ninth.
That's a Tuesday.
Let's, I can.
Or another word.
I can make.
I can make, I can make the twenty ninth for you.
What's the twenty ninth?
It's on a Tuesday.
Six thirty.
Six thirty, I can do.
Or even six, can we go earlier, yeah?
Five.
Um, I might be on.
We'll have an appetizer platter here for you, Matt.
What?
We'll have an appetizer platter here for you.
Oh, yeah.
I might be on eighths by then, so. I mean, I can do six then.
Twenty nine, twenty ninth at six o'clock.
Okay.
Even become a six thirty, you're not probably gonna miss.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can get a bunch of drive.
Twenty nine, six o'clock. Six twenty nine at six P M.
Well, I'm gonna bring you a pumpkin, you can car pump her. It's the day before Halloween.
Okay, let's fingers crossed.
The twenty ninth, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Hopefully Tobias can make it.
I just texted him, so I don't know if they're still having their meeting right now or what.
If anything, we can.
Either the twenty ninth or what's the other date that we said?
Twenty nine.
Twenty four till the twenty ninth, either one.
Cause the twenty fourth wasn't be what, five?
Yeah, it has to be early, cause that darts the twenty third.
Well, sorry, I could do five thirty, but it it might take a while to go through.
Yeah.
I would like just not be under any pressure.
Or the twenty third. That's a Wednesday.
I could ask her about.
Well, you get.
She throws on Wednesday.
I know, that's what I mean.
Oh, yeah, no, so then.
Oh, okay.
What's wrong with the twenty nine?
Nothing's wrong.
We're just gonna see if Tobias can come, that's what.
If Tobias can't come, we're getting a Plan B.
Oh, there.
Yeah, one guy compared to seven.
Oh, the one guy with all the answers though, so.
Can he be on speaker?
I don't think that would be, no, because he would need to look at the software, which is only look at here.
Okay, cause you got team view.
Cause I have, I had a lot of questions already as of last Friday with about two minutes looking at them.
I had one, and I got to the second line. Is it total personal services or is it total personnel services? It's not personal.
Personnel.
It's, so we gotta change that on all of that. Cause you've got total personal services.
That's what I thought.
I think it's personnel. Cause nothing is personal. Nothing should be under personal, right?
Yeah, the one, the question I have, you got both sheets?
I got whatever she gave us last.
Well.
Last month in that packet.
On the other, other sheet, I don't have it here.
You mean the one that I emailed out?
Anyway.
It says, uh, ending budget.
Zero?
No, and second penny was well, as of eight of twenty-three, we had a hundred and fifty-two thousand in second penny.
Yeah.
On the summary sheet where it doesn't have it broke down so far. It has us like at seventy-five. And I'm pretty sure we didn't spend seventy-five thousand dollars out of second penny this year, because the only thing that's in there is infrastructure.
Right.
And ambulance, so we spent six. And the budget's seventy-five thousand dollars left or our count seventy-five thousand less. And there, and there's a couple other accounts that kind of do the same thing between.
Make sure you got them highlighted so when we go next month.
Yeah.
On the twenty-ninth. On the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
At five thirty.
No, at six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Six o'clock.
You get your five thirty, it's very light. I mean, I mean, just quick, quickly just comparing this to this. I'm like, whoa, where did that go?
Right.
You know, and, and I'm not saying the last four months or last three months,